Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting together today for our April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five special call meeting. Welcome everybody that's here. That's the day in the courtroom. Anybody that's online, welcome them today too. Right. Christopher, you want to open your meeting?
Sure, ma'am.
At this time. Meeting were opened. We have established a forum. In an abundance of caution and due to the school system's financial current financial issue, most recently receiving a notice of IRS liens. It is my hope that the Northumberland County School Board will take action by contacting the Virginia State Police Financial Crimes Unit to request a full investigation. Your board will take further corrective action after updates are received.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we as a school board launch an outside investigation with the Virginia State Police Department.
Would you second?
Second.
Thomas?
What's the scope of the investigation?
Um. In light of what I just said and what Chairperson Christopher said, look at all of whatever goes into and has been a part of our finance financial issues. Um, that they take a look at everything, take a full look at all things. Would you like to add or amend the motion to include something?
I would like to add that as part of that investigation, sorry I'm ad libbing here, as part of that investigation, the Virginia State Police is requested to um determine if there are any violations of Virginia State statute and investigate those as well.
I have um received that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, any corrections? All right, we have a motion.
I think, I think in lieu of the um in lieu of the audit and the circumstances that are going down, I think the investigation should go back at least five years.
Would you second?
Second for the amendment to the amendment.
Comments, discussion? Not, the motion is approved. Now we need to vote. Vote. Okay, Dr. Karen?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, it has, everyone has approved.
Board members, any comments?
Yeah, I have one on, not, not that topic, but another topic concerning the school board. Okay, um, from my understanding, uh, I don't know if you have a full information, you have?
Nobody can hear me.
My understanding that uh certain parts of the uh the teachers are receiving a one percent bonus. And uh just wanted to hear from Ms. Chris, or anybody on the board on that?
I asked Dr. Leslie, she's sitting right there, because she's the one sent us the affirmation from the state as for who gets the bonus and when it is and so forth. So would you speak to that, please, Dr. Leslie?
I'm sorry, I can't, I did not hear the question, no.
Uh. My understanding is some teachers be getting a one percent bonus, but not all teachers.
I'm not aware of any bonuses that get.
Not yet.
We need to stay on.
Not yet, but you received.
But well, we are completely off track. Let us finish one item.
That's what I was asking.
Certainly come back for that.
Okay.
The let's fill the boards with a motion. But I think we're going to make a motion to go over the top of theirs. I make, I move that the Board of Supervisors asks the Virginia State Police to launch an investigation in the Northumberland County School Board, School Administration into violations of the ethical codes of Commonwealth and United States government related to financial records, personnel records, public meetings and public records management. My other thing is that.
I see.
All right, and then discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion being made by the school board in the county. As state police is brought in to determine whether or not they will do this investigation. Um, is it any way that both boards could work together?
Separate motions.
That's just the discussion.
Only thing I'm going to do this and amend this a little bit more, that we request Mr. Tadlock to help the uh conversations with the Virginia State Police.
Question?
Yes.
Both boards get the full content of the report?
Both boards get the full content on the board.
Good.
Yeah, but comments, questions?
I've just got a question, a general question. So we call the state police and they're coming just to determine whether, whether or not they will do the investigation, is that correct?
Think that's the way they work. They don't come in and start a review. They're going to look at our last forensic audit, they review that, see what kind of questions were found in that, and then they'll start the review process and then it's out of their hands after.
I'm gonna vote against that, but I'mma wait to the uh school board investigation come back first, and then I'll see if I want to vote for the motion you just made. All right.
Any other comments?
I, I just look at our motion basically is supporting the school system.
We are trying to get a, get an investigation for the town, because we are responsible, but everything has gone off.
Right.
The overall responsibility is ours. We have to oversee everything. We haven't been given the information over the years. So we have lack of information. And now is the only way we're going to get it and get the records straight, so we can start it on a good foot. All right, any other conversation?
Just so I'm clear, what is the difference between the two motions that were made? It sounds like we're asking for the same thing.
Same thing. It doesn't make sense.
Some of it is same, except it goes a little bit more in detail. We, we want them investigated into the US government part, or it's all all nine forty-one, all FICRA, all your payroll records will be investigated, everything. All of your public meetings, your private meetings, all of your record management, everything will be investigated. There will be any stones unturned. They only cover just a little bit. We, we're trying to finish it up. All right, y'all ready?
You mind reading the motion one more time?
All right. I move that the Board of Supervisors ask the Virginia State Police to launch an investigation into the Northumberland School Board and the School Administration into violations of the ethical codes of the Commonwealth and the United States government related to financial records, personnel records, public meetings and public and public records management. And we'd like for Mr. Tadlock to contact Virginia State Police Monday. Get this started.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all gentlemen?
I would maybe like to say I'mma vote against it because the school board just made the motion to get the same thing here. I think it's
Well, that's.
Wait, should wait.
All right, roll call, Mr. Long?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Haney votes aye. Tadlock? That's the instructions, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. In an effort to show that the both boards are unified and working together, I would like to adopt Mr. Haney's motion with the caveat that it goes back at least five years.
Second.
Thomas? Vote?
Aye.
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 Denise?
You're a normal thinker, and this is quick. Um. Adopt the Board of Supervisors' motion in lieu of our motion with the caveat that it goes back five years.
At least five years.
That's so both motions have the same timeline, correct? Yeah, okay.
My fellow board members have done it. Um.
Aye.
Another, Mr. Haney, there will be one audit?
One audit.
Do it for both of us.
We're all in agreement to do it.
And so we will not contact anybody. You all will do it, take care of it all.
And you receive the information.
Just like you received.
That we're both on the same page.
Okay.
All right. All right, y'all?
I, I just want to say one thing. As the information comes in, I want it presented to both boards.
Right.
Yeah, both boards receive it, and we'll have uh probably even multiple meetings or every, whenever we get the information, we'll have a meeting together so we can go over it.
Yep.
That way everybody's on the same page at the same time and we can discuss it.
Right.
That agreeable, feelable, my board over there?
Yeah.
I just want to be on the same page, everybody knows at the same time, and uh we can sit down and see what the facts are and discuss with. And all these meetings will be held in the public, so everybody sees exactly what's going on. The information will be posted there, tell on that table for everyone to pick a copy up, want that done, so. Anybody comes in, it also will be posted on the website. All right. Anything else, gentlemen?
Miss Chairman, if I may, um, the board's motion did not include a timeframe.
Um, amend that motion by adding a timeframe back a minimum of five years.
Okay, I just.
If they feel necessary to go back more, go back.
Okay, I would just need an amended motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion second, any other discussion? Roll call on that also, Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Haney votes aye. All right. Thank y'all.
Okay, sir.
See what else we have. We have the school finances we need to go through. Um. I guess we're here to get some discussion on the IRS, we try to find it a little bit more, that, that so we know why it happened, how long it's been going on. Um. Think y'all said, stated, y'all had six letters that you know of that.
Can I wait, wait one second?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask Dr. Karen Leslie, she will come up, she's hard of hearing, but she needs to respond to this and all. Dr. Leslie, would you come up to everyone that's here and let us know what you have been informing us?
Sure. Was there a specific question at the moment? I have a little trouble hearing over there.
All right, um. How many letters did you, did someone receive, not, not you, but did someone receive from the IRS pertaining to this lien? And how far back does it go?
So pertaining to the lien specifically, there was only one letter that stated there was a lien. Um, prior to that, we did receive a final notice that demanded a payment by a certain date in order to avoid a lien. Um, and just prior to that, there was an appointment request sent to us from the IRS. They actually mailed it February the twenty-fourth, however, comma, it was to the wrong address, it was to a physical address and not a P O box, which is where we receive our mail. Um, so we did receive that letter, but we did not receive it until March the seventeenth, um, so it was a little bit late. Um, prior to those, there were three bills that were received in our office. Um, one in December of two thousand twenty-four. Um, the other two, I don't have the dates that they were received. Um, these dates came from the IRS directly when I spoke to them. There was one sent in June of two thousand twenty-four, um, that did have the correct address for our office, and then there was one sent in March of two thousand twenty-three, which did have the correct address. Um, now just to be clear, there were other letters, um, or bills rather, that were sent. Um, there was one in two thousand twenty-two October, that was to the wrong address, and I can't confirm that it was received. I did not find a copy. There was one that was sent in November of two thousand twenty-three, again with the wrong address. I cannot confirm that that was received. Um, there were also two just prior to us getting the appointment request. One sent in December of two thousand twenty-four, um, that had the wrong address. I do not have a copy of that bill. And the one sent in February of two thousand twenty-five, again with the wrong address, and I do not have a copy of that bill. That was probably a, maybe a little more than you wanted to know.
I don't want to know everything.
Okay, um, so those are included in the packet that I had sent over. And I also included a timeline, um, so that you could see.
A lot of information.
Yeah, so yes, I did.
Yeah, I haven't seen, haven't had chance to.
And I did confirm, um, I did confirm with the IRS today that except for the case in December um, of two thousand twenty-four, they didn't send second invoices. So um, I asked that question because at home when we get a bill, usually get second notice and things like that. Um, they did confirm with me that they didn't send second notices, or they couldn't see them in their system, and she was very clear about being able to pull um, when those bills had been sent within that week and what the amounts were.
All right, I got a question. Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Leslie, um, you said you talked to the IRS today?
I did.
Um, has anybody else from the school division talked to the IRS about any of these issues?
Um, I believe that the Finance Director and the Finance Specialist spoke with, um, from, uh, interviews that I did with them, um, as well as pulling from call logs, um, that they did speak with the same officer. Our case was referred to an officer. Um, so that is the person from the IRS with whom we had to have all of our communication, and they did speak with that officer on March the thirteenth. Um, at two separate times, um. I don't have them in front of me, but it was March the thirteenth, but in any event, um, both of them did speak to them at that time. They, um, according to both their statements, as well as the, um, officer, they were aware that was a, there was a balance that was to be paid.
So I found out about this audit on April eleventh. When did you find out about it?
I, I don't remember April tenth or eleventh.
And what was your instruction when you found out about it?
Um, the first question I asked was, um, whether or not the school board was aware, and I was told no, and, um, I gave the directive to put the information on the closed session document for our meeting.
Do you know if anybody instructed the Finance Director or
I don't know.
Call the IRS?
I don't know. I do know that the IRS initiated contact with us. Um, when they received some of these bills back from February, they did call on the phone, um, because, um, the finance, the interim Finance Director had a phone message, um, that I found that she produced for me, um, from March the eleventh, that we had received a call into our office. At that time, but prior to that, I do not know.
So if I'm doing this right in my head, um, the IRS has been sending us letters since, confirmed letters since the fourth quarter, since March of.
Twenty-four. March of twenty-four, that, that letter was recovered in our office.
And we only have one, um, recorded, um, received message in December of two thousand twenty-four.
Um, so correct, in that particular case, the December twenty-five, twenty-four, when I recovered, um, the document, it was stamped right on the document when it was received. So in the cases of the other documents, I was able to locate them, but they were not stamped, so I can't. I can only tell you, um, the IRS gives you a one week uh estimate of when they send stuff out, because they're batch sent, so they'll say, oh, somewhere in the week of November twenty-fourth. So those are the dates I provided to you, um, for when they were sent.
So that amount, that amount was twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Right, so in that, in those particular two bills, November twenty-four and December, um, of twenty-four, they sent one for twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine sixty-nine. Then apparently they amended it. That was the one time that we got a follow-up, which I indicated on this paperwork, and they amended that amount to two sixty-two fifty-eight sixty-six. And that came in December. Um. Yes.
So the school board was, uh, the schools, not school board, because I found out on the eleventh. Um, the schools were well aware that there was these discrepancies in December. Of, at least that one.
The letter that I have is stamped in twelve of two thousand twenty-four for the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, yeah.
One other follow-up question. What are the procedures that are in place at the Finance Department of the schools that creates, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not say policy, but creates the procedures of, um, who's responsible for what things and when they're responsible?
So to my knowledge, and I do not work directly in the Finance Department, um, I am not aware that there are strict existing procedures for that.
Is there a procedure to?
There, there may be, but I'm not aware of it.
Is there a procedure to date stamp, especially bills from the IRS?
Yes, so.
On the IRS bills themselves, or is it just the envelopes, or what are we doing here?
I can't answer that question. I, I don't know the answer to your question. Um, I believe that the administrative assistant usually will timestamp the envelope. I do not know. She also timestamps the document and opens them. That would be a question for her, and I'm sorry, I did not. I don't know.
And then finally, the IRS officer, did she recall the, uh, the conversation with, um, the director and the payroll person?
So she did recall the conversation, um, that she had told them that the bill had to be paid. Um, she did not give me a lot of other information um, about that conversation, and she and I primarily discussed me trying to create a timeline to find out how we got to where we are.
Okay, finally, um, I promise this is the last.
Sure it is, no.
Uh.
I don't mean to make joke.
Did the, by any, the, um, officer um, tell you why she put the lien on the school's property?
Not specifically, but it dates in the final letter, that if you don't pay the balance by a certain date, they're gonna. I, I don't want to ad lib, but I mean, it's, it's indicated in that letter.
Thank you.
I've got one.
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear, when was the when did the first employee of Northumberland County learn that there had been a lien put on the county? What was that date?
My, it would have to be whoever opened that letter, April, um, seventh. And that would have been, um, I was told about it by the interim Finance Director.
Your first.
What date was the lien put on the county?
Believe it was March the twenty-third, but it was actually filed in the fourth, um. It actually says the notice was prepared and signed on the twenty-fifth of March.
I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is her ID number.
If the IRS puts a lien on, lien on the county on March twenty-third, I would think that somebody in the county would know that a lien had been on, put, been put on the county on March the twenty-third.
I don't know the answer to your question. I, I don't know if someone other than me was made aware. I can only tell you at this point that I, when I was made aware.
Um, sorry, back at it.
Yeah.
Um. What is the total amount that we owe?
Um, at the time, so it's of the, kind of a tricky question, and I'm going to navigate it as best I can. Um, the actual lien amount is fifty thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars and sixty cents. However, um, I clarified this today when I spoke with the IRS officer. That is the tax lien amount, and it's not the penalties and fees amount, which of course, um, at this point is significantly higher, so I've, um. I don't, I don't have the number in front of me from today, um, but it is hovering just under fifty-four thousand at the moment, but again, that's not straight taxes, that would include all of the fee. Does that answer your question?
Has the school paid it, any portion of this bill?
Uh, excellent question, and I didn't bring a copy of the bill, but we did send a check in, um, in the amount of just over fifty-three thousand. Um, and that would cover the lien to have the lien removed. I did speak with, um, when I spoke with the officer at the IRS today, she said that once they received and processed that check, they would then issue, um, a removal form of the lien, and even though there's still going to be some, um, newer taxes that actually weren't in that amount, um, from, um, this most recent quarter. Um. That, uh, we would be able to try to do an abatement for some of the penalties. She didn't know if we could get a lot of that, and the older ones, she wouldn't be able to do. Um, but we would still be responsible for the interest, but again, we could sort of work that out, but if, once we got that main chunk taken care of, that we would be able to remove the lien and then work out all of the other pieces to get those taken care of.
So where did the fifty-three thousand dollars come from in our budget?
Um, so right now, it has had to be paid from the fund one, because that was the place that we had money in order to pay.
Which is what?
But it's, um, it'll be out of the instructional budget for right now.
Does that mean that likely you guys will be coming back to us for another appropriation?
So I do want to clarify that I don't do the accounting.
Right.
But my general sense would be yes.
While I have you here.
Well. Go ahead, I want to make one too.
At the last board meeting, Karen, sorry. Um. I asked for the dollar figure for, um, the request by the schools to make payroll at, um. It was, I don't remember the date of the meeting, but, um, do you know what that figure is now?
Um, I did send, I believe I sent it to the school board, and I don't remember the exact number, but eighty-three thousand is the estimate. Um, it is right in that neighborhood. I don't remember the exact number, but ninety-nine percent sure that eighty-three thousand is accurate.
So my, my question is, when they, and you may not know the answer, when they went to the Board of Supervisors and asked for an additional eighty-three thousand dollars, are there any caveats on that?
I was not, I don't know any.
Or it comes out of our budget next year or anything?
I don't know, I wasn't, I, I don't know anything about that. Um, I wasn't involved in that, so that would maybe be a question for the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, now you have one thing cleared up. IRS has the right address now, right?
Yes, and I did also request that they note in our file, I did also inquire why, um, the address seemed to change back and forth between our physical address, then it would come to our P O, then it would go back to the physical address. And they had stated that they update the address based on how the nine forty-one for that particular quarter has been filled out, so that means if we had filled out a nine forty-one and used the P O box, then any discrepancy would come to the P O box, but if they had used the physical address on the nine forty-one for a specific quarter, then that would have actually just come back to the physical address, and that's why the address tends to be going back and forth between the two. I did request that she put some kind of note in our account, that they should never send it to our physical address, and so please always override it to our P O box from here on out.
Good question. Now, a lot of these questions you have done fantastic, but we need someone here that know more. We need someone here that know more about the finance. What's happening? Who would that be?
Um, so that's, you know, this has been ongoing, so that's a good question. As you all know, I've been here a short time. We have an interim finance director at the moment. I don't know if anybody would have the complete picture. You know, the finance director, perhaps who's out on leave, would be able to give us some information, previous people from the finance department, the interim finance director. That would be my, my recommendation, who might be able to give you more detail than I can. Um, I will tell you, however, that I culled the documents that were available in the office. I don't know if they would be able to give you a better picture. Like I said, I, I spent a really long time putting all of the information together. Getting it into a timeline, confirming it with the IRS based on what we had and what their records are. So. As far as this particular bill is concerned, I feel like we do have a pretty good picture on. Um, the communication that had happened. Now, who knew about what? I can't, I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Can I make a motion?
I've got, can I, I got a, I got a question.
When were you appointed acting superintendent?
Um, so it was at the, um. Specially called, uh, meeting in March, and I, I don't recall the date off the top of my head. The fourteen?
Twenty eight.
I'm sorry.
It was the twenty eighth.
Oh, okay, maybe the twenty eighth. It was when we had had a specially called meeting.
And, and the reason I'm bringing that up for the folks in attendance. You coming in at the, at the back end of this thing, and I want everybody to know that. Um, and they need to know that right up front. You were appointed as acting superintendent back in, in March, in March meeting. And as you ask a question, you don't have some of the answers. It's because she was not in charge at that time, but she is answering the questions the best to her abilities. So I'll go.
Back listen. As so, who, um. Who picks up the mail?
Uh, typically our administrative assistant that we have in our central office.
All right. Well, if this person picks the mail up. And is that the same person that actually opens it up?
Um, sometimes, um, it really depends, and I will be truthful. In the finance department, I don't know if that person is opening the mail for the finance department. I know when mail is disseminated to me by that person. It is stamped on the outside of the envelope when it came in, but it's not opened. It goes into my inbox sealed. Um, so I can speak for, you know, how that works for me.
All right, well, whoever picked the mail up and opened it should have reported it immediately, should have brought it to someone's attention. And there are a lot of people who bring it, bring it to their attention.
Yes, sir.
You know, uh, that's just uncalled for. Now, I don't know what steps you've taken to, to go back to these people to. You see why they didn't do it, or what actions you're going to take against that personal persons. Now, but somebody has to be held accountable.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Because if you have an employee that can't. Give you the information, especially something like this, you don't need them. All right. Now, you said you paid your, paid that. Tax balance off.
So we sent the check, um, when I spoke to Officer Taylor this morning, she had not received the check. We did actually send it directly to her. So that she should get it into her hands, and she and I have already set a meeting for next week. I believe it's the twenty eighth. That's next week, Thursday. I don't have calendar in front of me, um, but at that time we'll confirm that she's received the check, and then she and I will go through whether or not we can do penalty abatement and look at some of those other interest issues.
All right, now, when did you approve the issue of this check?
Um, to right after our meeting, which was, um, my son's birthday, the April fourteenth. So on the fifteenth.
All right, so you approved it in, in your normal board meeting?
Say it again.
Did you approve this in your normal board meeting?
Uh, we discussed it, yes. And then the next day, um, it was approved during that meeting, and then the next day I gave the directive, the finance director to cut the check.
All right, so you said it was approved in that meeting. Was that the open meeting or the closed meeting?
During the closed meeting, we discussed the legal issue.
That's a legal issue, but you didn't approve the writing of the check.
Um, no, in the closed meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we didn't, um, I'm.
If, if you talked about it in closed meeting, fine.
Okay.
You came out of your closed meeting, you would have made a motion to. To, uh, pay that invoice or write a check in a certain amount of money. When was that done?
That was, I don't believe that was done in the open meeting.
That is not the way it's supposed to be done. That is public information. It needs to be disclosed to the public. You may discuss it in closed meeting. When you come out, you have to make your motion to include the dollar amount and who it's going to. Y'all gotta watch that. That will come back to bite you. All right, um. That person picked it up. All right, okay, I don't have anything else like this.
Ms. Leslie, one question. Did these IRS letters come registered mail?
Uh, they didn't come registered mail. The last. Free items that you were looking at, um, did come certified. It did require a signature at the post office. And just as a caveat, I did call the post office to see if they could pull me a record of who had signed for them, and if they had signed for others, they did not have that information to give me.
Okay. Okay.
Cool. I got one, I got, say, on one of your nine forty ones, I noticed a. Fifty thousand dollar increase in the social security amount. I forget which number it was. It had one as, uh. The federal was thirty two thou, thirty three hundred and twenty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, and then it got to be thirty seven thousand. And that would have been, that would have made a big difference in the amount of money that you owed to IRS. That was just a, just a typo area right there. I mean, typo error. I, I did catch that one on one of your nine forty ones. And you should have got a notice on that, and. When, when that notice was given, whoever the financial director was, should have took care of that immediately.
Okay, I think I know which one you're talking about, the older one, um, that I had sent.
I think it's one of the old one.
Yeah, for a discrepancy. It looks like they did, um, and I did have a copy. If we're talking about the same thing. Um, and I did not include that one in your packet because it did not become part of this bill. There seems there was a discrepancy back in two thousand and twenty two. Um, for an amount of about nine thousand dollars. Um, and at that time, the finance director, who was Ms. Booth at that time, had written a letter, um, to get that rectified. I'm talking about the right thing. And without looking at, I just, I want to, you know, make sure that I'm being accurate.
Yeah, but, but I did catch that. That was one of the things I caught, and I was brought to my attention from Mary. I actually brought it to my attention.
And I, I do think.
Look at it on the cell phone. I couldn't see it.
Sure.
Then when I got to the laptop, I could see a little bit about it, but that wasn't, was a mistake. So if that could have been corrected, that would have cut your tax back a long way. So I don't know if that's been, that's been taken care of or not. Now, the deficiency, was that based upon non-payment? Or underpayment of taxes?
For, um, the tax deficiencies. From what I can see, it looks like they were miscalculated when they sent in the nine forty one. I am not an accountant. Um, but from the bills that I've been able to go through, that's what it looks like. And when I look at, which I sent you as well, which was one of the letters that we received. That had a breakdown of what we owed, um, it really, I mean, it showed the tax charges broken out from the penalties, broken out from, um, the interest. So. It appears that that is, um, a discrepancy in the numbers. And on a couple of the bills I sent, you can almost. You can see where they, they have our calculation and then their calculation, and how that offset is different to get that, that value that they've given us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I was like, I don't know if I'm doing a good job explaining that. Guys are making me nervous.
I'm sure it'd be nervous. He's doing a good job.
Well, we can always, any of us can make mistakes in figures. That is very easy to do. It happens all the time. But, uh, you try to correct them as soon as possible, especially if you're dealing with the IRS.
Yes, sir.
Because whatever they say, they, they always tell you they're right, even if they could be wrong.
Yes, sir.
All right, Dan, anything else?
Um, thank you. You're doing a good job, so keep it up.
Yeah, thank you.
And, um, you should bring those along that, you know, can help. You know, in certain situations, when, when you need that help, you know.
Yeah. And, and I realize you have been kind of dropped into this. You don't know the past history on it, and it doesn't. So you can't really answer a question past your time, time you started. Uh, that does make it difficult for you. I know we've asked questions back before. But, uh, somebody was responsible for it, and that person needs, needs to be accountable for it, all persons. So that needs to be taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I don't know if Ms. Leslie can answer, or. Maybe someone can. How many finance directors has the Northumberland County? Uh, school board had in the last five years?
Oh, boy. Okay, let's see. At least four, at least four.
Three.
Four.
Four.
I'm hearing three, I'm hearing four, and I'm hearing five.
We have three full time and then one interim right now.
In, in the, altogether in the last five years, what I'm looking for.
All right. What are the, what, what were the qualifications of your, of your finance director?
I do not have that description in front of me, so I apologize.
We would like to, to find out what their qualifications were.
Sure, I can, um, pull the job description actually and send it.
Yeah. See, see what their qualifications are.
Sure.
All right, Phil. Actually. Madam Chair, I, I, I think I want to make a motion. And hopefully the board of supervisors, um, will support me in this. But based on the fact that. Our financial, um, situation is questionable at best. Information is not flowing properly. At the school board in terms of finances. I'm going to make a motion that all the finances of the school board be turned over to the county. And, um. Effective today, and I would hope that. The board of supervisors will bring somebody in from the county to. Ensure that we have a second set of eyes on the books and the finances, um, going forward today.
I second that.
I, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we already did that at our meeting last week, the joint meet. Could you?
No, before you, before you make your motion. Um.
Motion's delayed.
Motion's delayed, okay. Well, for clarification, um, our motion that we had a discussion on. Was to, to, uh, to explore the options of creating a role of county finance director with the responsibilities for finance in Northumberland County, including the Northumberland County school system and taking over the finances. So that's where we. Went to process. That's why we were talking with the Berkeley group to explore those. Um. Options. And I think what he's doing, he is making the, the motion right now, which is a little stronger, um, to move forward in turning the finances over to the county.
And that doesn't negate the, the agreement that we have that we're going to, you know, find somebody to run the, the finances for the county. I mean, it's just as. I just think we're in exogenous circumstances with our finances at this time, and, um, I, I think something needs to be done. Um, we can't afford to have mistakes. The MOE was a, a problem, two hundred and forty four thousand. Dr. Ledley identified an additional, you know, two hundred and fifty, fifty five thousand, I think it was, Dr. Ledley. Um, we're in dire straits right now in terms of our finances, and, um, I think that our. Acting finance director is. Not able to keep up, um, with, um, the demands of that job. And I just think that we would be remiss if we don't address that issue today. I'm not saying that it's a permanent thing, but it's something that I think we should, we should actually do right now. His motion and second. Any other discussion?
Um, I would need clarification on what that does for our employees at the school board office.
That's why I asked the board of supervisors to have, bring somebody in to help our employees and get a second set of eyes on it. I don't think it would change our employee's status. It's just bringing somebody in to ensure that what we're doing from this day forward is going to be accurate.
I got a, Mr. Kearns, I got a question for you, and y'all correct me, please. Could you withdraw your motion and let me make an amendment to the motion that I made at the last meeting, and you come back with your motion?
Sure.
I think it would be more in line.
I'll withdraw my motion at this time.
Help explain, maybe help. Get this process through a little better.
That was true.
Okay, so. I want to make an amendment to the motion that I made April eighth, so that, uh, it now reads as follows. In support of the students and teachers of Northumberland County and restore the trust and accountability to the school finances, that the county immediately engage. A contractor for the purpose of overseeing and assisting. The orderly transition of the finances from the schools to the county effective July one, two thousand and twenty five. And to develop an organizational plan for the operation of the school finances. By the county. Additionally, the scope of work will include monitoring. Of the performance in the school administration and properly completing its financial duties during this transaction period. Um. That is my motion. And the purpose is, is to try to get the school board through the next two months. And transitional to taking the finances. And I feel the young ladies that y'all, that, that are in there now, uh, are doing the very best they can with what they got to work. It's, it's hard to come in. And, uh. Clean up issues that.
School finances are a very complicated, uh, thing. Um. There's percentages of salaries, there's percentages of federal grants, there's, and it's a lot to learn. When you're thrown in that position, if you, if you don't have the experience in it, and I agree with you. Um. I guess you guys will vote on that, and then I'll adopt it.
That was a motion. Just wait, anybody?
Oh, just make the comment that I.
Hold on just a second. We need to get a second on it. We don't need a discussion till it gets.
I'll second it.
All right, now we have discussion.
I would just make the comment that I think I've heard every member of these two boards agree that the school. Is in need of assistance with their finances, and it is my opinion, this is the way to go about doing it, and that's why I second your motion.
Can I make, can I make? Excuse me, employees are constantly begging us. We need somebody in here to help us. We're so far behind, we can't do it all. Mr. Brand, if I can make a suggestion. That you. To avoid any confusion, you said July first in your motion, twenty twenty five, which is the date that you would take over the finances, but, um. What are we going to do between today and July first? So.
Well, I will amend that to the point to where I feel that we need to move forward immediately.
Right.
With the, uh, contractor. For the purpose of getting the school finances.
I agree.
Uh, in line for the next two months to get into the next fiscal year. But by July one, two thousand and twenty five, we want to take the finances over. And also, an amendment to my motion is that I do expect full. Uh. Cooperation from school and accessibility to all of the, the finances and software programs that are used. So when this person comes in, I want them to be able to get in there and really help the staff and have access to it all.
I'll second your motion with the amendment.
All right, restate your motion one more time, Mr. Brand.
All right, let me see if I can put it all together now. So I'm in to move the motion of April eighth, so that we now, now it now reads, in support of the students and teachers of Northumberland County. And to restore trust and accountability to the school finances, that the county immediately engage a contractor for the purpose of overseeing and assisting. The orderly tra- the orderly transition, but also getting the school system's finances in, in shape for the next two months. Uh, and be able to effectively take over July one, twenty twenty-five and develop an organizational plan for the operation of the school finances by the county. Additionally, the scope of work will include monitoring of the performance of the school administration in uh, in properly completing its financial duties during this transaction. So it covers the next two months. It gets us into the new year. And that's my motion.
Alright, I'll just say, I want to say, we have no one that we can put in place right now. We're in a process of looking.
Yeah.
We really can't help them right this minute.
But it doesn't mean that we can't.
Yeah.
Get in here.
We've already started the process, but we can't do anything for them until we parlay that first. That's got our hands kind of tied right this minute. We're in a process of finding. We're waiting for information from a company right now. We were supposed to hopefully receive it by the day of Monday. Didn't receive it today, so I imagine it'll be Monday. Then we can start making a decision. I don't want to walk into this telling you that I can help you today and I can't do it. And it's basically what, what we would be doing.
Well, that, the motion pretty much states we're gonna immediately uh, engage a contractor, so.
Yeah, we got, we got.
My point is.
But we can't help them yet.
Right.
And I don't want to believe in that we can.
Right, but once we find one, we can go and help them.
We can start helping as soon as we get, we bring someone on. And then we'll take school employees and put them into the county group. And then we can, we can start really taking care of these finances. Let's try to get them straight the best we can. And we'll need input from you on any knowledge that you haven't, have about anything so we can get it straight.
Well, my, my recommendation would be that we reach out to a local um, CPA firm and have them be interim until we can get the contractor that you all talked about.
Well, that may be possible, but I don't know if we'll get one right on the, right on the spur of the moment.
Could, could I ask a question if you don't mind?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
You, you just made the comment that the school employees would be put in the counting group. That mean they would not be school employees?
Not be school employees anymore. They'll be transferred to the county's employees. They'll be under the county then, taking care of the accounting through the county.
I thought the original motion was they would have additional help as a school employee.
They, they're not gonna be a school employee. They'll be a county employee with a supervisor over. Will they still be doing the same job?
I just, I, I need to understand the logistics of it. That's why I was asking.
I saw, but they'll just be transferred over.
Okay, we got a motion. So we got a motion on the floor. Alright.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. All those against? Alright.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school board adopt verbatim Mr. Brand's motion.
Motion.
Um.
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Well, thanks.
Got that for you. Gentlemen, y'all have anything else? Will we move on to something else?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to, to say that the events recently have made me feel very uncomfortable, very unhappy and very disappointed. And um, just as, as an aside, I, I do attend a lot of the Virginia School Board Association meetings. And because I feel that my expertise is really in curriculum and instruction and I'm very weak in, in many other areas. And I feel that in many areas um, when we have discussions, I'm not always privy to some of the information. And so I signed up for the Virginia School Boards Association session um, that it was on trust. How we as school boards trust each other. And this, uh, it just so happened that it was yesterday in Charlottesville at the Virginia School Boards Association meeting. And superintendents and school members from all over the state were there sharing problems they have and, and how we learn to work together and um, and solve problems and make stronger school boards. And since my tenure, I have worked for that. I have uh, worked very hard to help us improve, uh, to work together better. Um, and so faced with what we had found out Monday, faced with uh, the surprises that we are constantly seem to be um, the challenges that we are having with finances and um, and not getting information that we need to make some decisions. I went to the Virginia School Boards Association Director and I asked her what happens when a school board member is unaware of what is going on? What is our liability? What if we are, are blindsided? And, and we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. We are, we are faced with making a decision or we find out the last minute, we have a, a lien on the school. Um, or, or perhaps there's a concern that some school members are not privy to s- to certain amount of information. I said, is it incumbent upon a school board person who feels that they're not getting information? What do we do legally? Could we be sued? Uh, and Gina Patterson's answer was, if you do not report what you suspect may be happening, even if you are wrong, she said you are as liable as the next fellow. And so um, so when you, we received then this invitation to join with you today. Um. I can speak only for myself, but I'm just appalled at what we've been able to find out and what we are uncovering right now. And so I just think it's very, very important that we uh, we are open and honest and there's absolute transparency. I still don't know exactly who I am supposed to report to the Virginia School Boards or this, or the Board of Education, but I feel like I don't want to be, I want to be in compliance. I don't want any of us to be in trouble uh, at whatever levels we are supposed to report to. So that's why I went to Gina to ask her and she is checking with that particular lawyer to make sure that, you know, that we report accurately when we are not given information, when, when we feel like we've been left out. Uh, I just want to make that statement for the record because I think it's very, very important that all the school board members get the same information at the same time and that I don't have to ask the school board lawyer if we are supposed to get it together or if certain members are privy to the information and then we get it later. I feel that it's very important that in whatever organization you're in, we are all privy to that information so that we're knowledgeable and we can make decisions together. Uh, whether they're financial. We didn't make a decision to write that check to the IRS. Not as a board, we didn't vote on that. And I'm just, no, it was not a board vote.
The check's not good.
And I'm just being transparent with you.
Uh, let me tell you something. Anything that happens in your school system, you have the right to know, the right to go in at any time and look at that your superintendent answers to you. They cannot tell you that you cannot see this uh, or what you can see. If they're telling you that, you need to remove them. That's the way it is. You are, they work for you. You're entitled to see everything in the school system, right down to the last penny that's spent or received. That's the way this works. This board here is entitled to see everything going on in this county. And that includes what you're sending to this county also. And when we ask you for information, we have the right to see it. And it's been in the past, we didn't get it. We ask and ask and ask. The relationship between these two boards is nothing. And we're in the process of trying to make, bring it back and it's gonna be difficult. That's why we're extending our hand to help you with your finances. I think it's on its way, y'all gonna get out of it and it's gonna be difficult for the county to get out of it also. It's gonna take a lot of time. Cause you need to start looking at everything that's there. No one can question you and tell you, you can't see it.
And just on a personal note, I think it's, it's, it's very, very important that we run our meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. That we have an agenda, that we agree upon the agenda, that we have all of the documentation before the day of the meeting so that we are informed. If we don't have the documentation, that we have the time to ask for it. And that we make sure that in the open meeting, that we are voting on what we have talked about and it, we're not blindsided by information that we haven't discussed together. I just, I feel like, you know, there's a disconnect here. I feel like as a member, I don't always feel that I'm getting the information that I need. Um, and, and I know this is a very difficult time with our superintendent not here. Um. You know, with our director of finance not here. Um, right now, our clerk, we have no clerk. So I think getting the information is, is been a struggle. It's just something that we are uh, very much looking forward to the Board of Supervising, Su- Board of Supervisors helping us straighten out and having you make suggestions.
Well, you know, a copy of Robert's Rules of Order doesn't cost very much money. And I would suggest that school system buy a copy for everyone to read and y'all start following Robert's Rules of Order.
We do and we, and, and I will tell you that it is.
Everyone needs that copy, read it, follow.
But what I'm saying is on the, on the Virginia School Boards Association, we have videos about how to do, we have videos about everything. And I think it's just really important that we keep order. Um, and, and.
I think I, I, I want to piggyback on Cheryl. I got some things I'm gonna say and it's gonna make people in this room very uncomfortable. First of all, since Karen Leslie has been the acting superintendent, the information flow has started. Prior to that time, I have gotten no information from the superintendent. The problem with the way the school board is operating and I will give you an example. The superintendent went out on FMLA. I found out twenty days later that she was on FMLA. At the same time, Dr. Leslie found out. Now, Dr. Leslie, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was under the assumption that she was not the acting superintendent, but the um, designate. Which means that she takes her direction still from the superintendent. But twenty days went by and I, I, I assume you sent emails giving clarification for things and she didn't have the power that she needed to run the division. And that information was kept by the chair and the vice chair from this, from three members of this board. I will also say and if anybody's noticed, I don't always certify anymore. And the reason that I don't certify anymore is because something was discussed in closed session that shouldn't have been discussed. And that's why I didn't certify. Um, and that's, it's simple as that. If people want to know the reason I don't certify.
Yeah, you fell asleep.
Hmm, what? Keep up, keep on with the truth.
Just keep going.
Um. The vice chair, I have been notified by two other members on this board that the vice chair has used closed session to intimidate three members on this board. And I'm one of them and I have it highly documented. I know that there were two other members on this board where the vice chair has been vicious in her attack on people so that she can maintain order and lead as she would think it was by defacing and defaming people on the board and trying to intimidate us. I can give you example after example. Another example I have is the chair of this board notified everybody in the last joint session the actual reason Dr. Worga went on FMLA. And I believe, and I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be pretty accurate, that's a HIPAA violation. And that's why we don't discuss it. So I'm gonna make a motion right now and I'm only giving you a few examples. That the school board self-report the improper actions of the chair and the vice chair over the last year or since I've been on the board to the Virginia Department of Education, which is the administrative body over the school board.
And I second that.
There's dysfunctionality going on and this is why there's been a problem between these two boards.
Amen. Discussion.
I'd like to make um, a comment. I would vote no on that motion. Um. I would agree that we are dysfunctional. Certainly. But as far as what goes on in closed session, I don't believe we need to discuss personnel issues in open session. Uh, I totally disagree with um, closed session is for closed session. There are things, and maybe it's my upbringing, that, you know, you don't air your dirty laundry in open public. If there is something that is not, you know, legal, there is something that doesn't include personnel. Um, though, that's what you have closed session to do. That's the notice that is read at every meeting is that we are going into closed session to talk about legal issues, personnel and whatever. If we do have dysfunction, which we do, everybody can see that right now. If there is dysfunction in this school board, but we try to do what's the right thing to do with the proper parameters. That may just be my culture and the way I grew up. But, but are we dysfunctional? Yeah, you can see that. There's no, no hiding it. But I believe in doing things within the correct parameters.
And I, I agree with a lot of what you said, however. Um, I was hoping that this board would vote unanimously to follow the regulations that Dr. Davis stated from the BSBA. Um. We don't need the board's. We don't need the board's permission to report these idiosyncrasies or these problems. And as a board member, I'm compelled to notify the Department of Education. And that's exactly what I'm gonna do. So if you do not wanna vote for it, that's fine. But I am not gonna be sitting in a meeting in a closed session under the cloak that we're in closed session, it's a personnel issue, and you're gonna personally attack me. That is not gonna happen. I'm just saying right now.
And I'm just going to give my one-minute discussion, just as a protective measure, to rely on the Virginia School Boards Association, which is our parent organization, which looks after what our needs and has classes to teach us how to make good decisions, how to get along, every topic you could think of. And we have classes on everything from FOIA to, what is it, bloodborne pathogens, everything you could think of. They give us information to make us better school board members. And I want to be, and I want us to be protected as school board members and not make mistakes and set ourselves up to be sued if we are reporting things that we should not be. And so that was my question to Gina Patterson was, what can we do? You know, how, how do we rectify, or can we be sued for certain things that we say? And I feel that she is the bottom line, and we have a lawyer with the Virginia School Boards Association, and she refers my questions to that lawyer. And I, I feel like that is a good, a good thing for all of us, to keep us forward-thinking and not making mistakes. That's, that's why I, I would vote for if any, if there's any problems at all, or any concerns, or questions, or we're in doubt that we report an incident as a school board to the Virginia School Boards Association, just to make sure that we are, as we say in the trade, covering our ankles.
I will say there is Virginia code that actually explicitly says and addresses personnel issues. I don't know it 'cause I'm not a lawyer, but I looked it up the other day, and what needs to be in a personnel file? And those are the things that are supposed to be discussed in a closed session, so that we protect people's interests. If you're defaming my character, you're breaking the law. And you're using a closed session to do that. And that's not what it's for. So there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded.
Yes, all the questions.
Okay, motion? And I have two people, all right, so let's vote again. Would you touch with head crutches and then the-
We didn't vote.
Pardon?
We didn't vote.
We haven't voted at all.
No.
That's right.
Motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second on the floor. They have had comments. Any discussion? At this time, I'm gonna ask for the vote. Dr. Karen?
Yay.
Aye.
Carol? Mrs. Mizzie?
Nay.
Mrs. O'Beal?
Nay.
And Ms. Christopher?
Nay.
Vote fail.
And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm I'm not gonna speak as much as Dr. Curran did, but, you know, it's easy to point fingers and, and call out people and try to do whatever you do at all our meetings. But you're no saint, and people, if they see just a piece of what you act like in our public meeting, they, they would love to see you in closed meetings. So great job putting that on me. I've nowhere near come to the level of you. And as far as the information being held back, as a board, we all just found out about the IRS incident as a whole board. Dr. Leslie went back on a timeline for two years. We all just found out a week ago. Who gets the blame for knowing that information for two years and not bringing it to the board? It's not, I, I, I'm trying to put the pieces of the puzzle together.
That's why the state police-
We've had, exactly, that's why we voted on it. So that's, that's all I have to say. And as far as Cheryl not knowing information, we all get the information on board docs. We've requested it to be uploaded by Friday evening, so we have the weekend to read over it.
But that's not what always happens.
No, I know it doesn't. That's why I mean we've requested, so that we don't get last-minute information.
And we have a new clerk, and that's part of the problem too.
We don't have a clerk at all.
Well, we, until last week.
...from the last clerk until the meetings or the day of the meeting. You know, we're, we're, we're forgetting the part that we have a person that was in the equation, that's been taken out of the equations. Now all the problems are coming to the surface. I don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure that out. I'll just let everybody else figure that out. So, anyway, and I do know that sometimes people have come into the board meetings, board members, and they have not studied their board docs. And that's on them. That's not on other people not notifying them of information. You've gotta read your board docs. That's your job. That's part of your job. So.
I agree with you 100%. They should read the board docs. I actually brought that up in the, in the meeting because there were so many errors in the meeting minutes, and nobody made a motion except for me that it was all wrong. So I agree with you. Yeah. Everybody should be reading the information. I'll also say that some of us have a job. And if that information is being put on the same day as the meeting, that information is getting to us when we're in a closed meeting. We haven't had time to thi- think about it. We haven't had time to research it, and it's being discussed. So yeah, I agree. But some of us work for a living. And we don't have time to access board docs the day of a meeting. So yeah, I agree. We should enforce the rule that if it's not on by Friday, and maybe I'll make that motion. Now, Chair, I'd like to make a motion that all information that's gonna be discussed in closed session be posted on board docs by close of business Friday at 5:00 PM. And no other information is to be added to board docs after that time.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Amen? Vote?
Aye.
I wanna go back to the state police investigation. We all voted on to have this investigation. I would like to make a motion to request the school board, the school superintendent, Ms. Worgo, and the finance director, Ms. Booth, on administrative leave with a pay until the investigation is over. I think it'd be to the best interest of the school board to do that until the investigation is over. And that's my motion.
All right, I got a motion.
I'm not so sure you can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I'm not- Y'all might not be able to do that, but I can request that you look into this.
Even, even if they weren't, this board cannot put them on leave or order you guys to put them on leave. I am requesting that. And I think it would benefit this school board if that could happen.
Should we, like, look into it with our lawyer?
That's right.
All right, I got a motion to have second.
I got a second.
All right, I got a motion second. Now do I have discussion?
There's too much unknown right now, and those are the two biggest players in the unknown.
Yep, that's 100% true. We're making a request. It's not a demand or anything like that. It's a request for y'all to investigate. So that y'all need to at least take some kind of action to it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know what it's gonna take to get me to get confidence in the North Island County School Board, in the taxpayers. It's, it's gonna take a lot. Maybe this is a start. Confidence is very low. So.
All right, any other conversations? If not, all of them favorite, say aye.
Aye.
All of us again?
Aye.
As fast as four to one. Now, we got all these people sitting over here in the audience, and I know some of them are probably ready to say something.
Can I cut you off just for a second? I'm a former state trooper. I've been a criminal investigator for 30 years. And typically, if the state police or a federal agency is called in to do an investigation, and you said it yourself, Mr. Brand, that the superintendent and Ms. Booth, if they're called in to do an investigation, typically that person is put on leave with pay until the investigation is complete. So that that person cannot go into the schools and make evidence go away, try to hide things. And I say that as a federal agent and a former state trooper. That's why they do it. And typically, they'll cut off all email, all access to all documents. And it only helps the investigators. It takes out part of that equation. So I think it would be in the best interest that this board moves to place them on administrative leave until the investigation is complete.
And I second that.
Amen?
Yes, I, I'm only concerned that I don't want to be putting us in a position for a lawsuit. And, you know, I wanna do what's best for the county, for the kids. And if we are violating FMLA law, I don't want to do that, but I do believe that that we need to, to place Dr. Worgo on administrative leave pending whether it's legal or not.
Just, just her?
So you, you just said Dr. Worgo, is that correct? Did you say Dr. Worgo, just?
And, and Tara Booth.
And Dr. Booth, I mean, and Tara Booth as well. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, is discussion still open?
Discussion, yes.
I mean, I would think that we need to discuss this with the school board lawyer first. If everybody's in agreement. I, I don't have a problem with it, but I would think that we need to protect ourselves and discuss it with our school board lawyer.
So I'll amend the motion as stated, with the caveat that it be run by the school board attorney to make sure that we're well within our right to do it.
I second that.
Any other comment?
It is my intent to vote for this pending our conversation with the attorney. We wanna do everything that is right and in order. And by that, within our legal parameters.
Right.
I would agree with, with Ms. Mizzie.
Any other comment? I'm gonna call for the vote. Sure?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Mizzie?
Aye.
Mrs. O'Beal?
Aye.
And Ms. Christopher?
Aye.
All right. Now, I'm gonna open public comment up here. Anyone in here tonight like to speak? Anyone like to speak?
Kind of right.
Mr. Chairman?
Come on up, sir.
Scott?
Yeah, that's a four-minute timeframe.
I really object to the idea of putting Ms. Worgo and Ms. Booth on administrative leave with pay. They are both on a vacation now. I understand there is a family leave act consideration. But the citizens in this county have been financially burdened by their, by their gross mismanagement of the school system. I don't feel like paying them to go on a long vacation. My recommendation is that they be put on administrative leave with no pay. Or fired outright. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Uh, Dr. Karen Pika, and I really appreciate the actions taken tonight. I appreciate the courage of the board of supervisors as well as Dr. Curran and Dr. Davis. No coffee this morning. I think it's high time this happens, so the state police come in. I've watched for the past two years. Some citizens in this county have watched for the past five or 10. The increase in the school board's budget every year, we find out they're not paying taxes. We find out that there's revenue that's missing. We find out that test scores are going down. You find out that last year in the budget survey that was done, teachers were asking for supplies. The special education teacher was asking for supplies. But yet we have all the special education money that can't be accounted for? We've got people that are getting, insurance for people that are, that's getting paid that don't even work for the school system? Well, now we're starting to find out where some of that money has gone. The school board has consistently not complied with the state code on open meetings. You don't have boards, you don't have meeting minutes posted since November. They've been passed, they're not posted. One month you discuss use of school facilities in a closed session, the next month you discuss it in an open session. This is all in information that's available publicly. It's also available publicly that last year, the school board submitted a budget that showed they were gonna use the school construction grant for a playground. Yet someone questioned whether or not that was true. And all the school board member signatures were on the letter that was submitted to the board of supervisors saying, "We promise to use this money in this manner." We have heard consistently from this school board, "We don't know the answer to this." I've been asking questions for two years at those school board meetings, not getting answers. So I applaud the courage of the board of supervisors for taking this action. The citizens in this county cannot afford more money to go to these failing schools. Some of the programs in this school are awesome. I was over there the other day in my economic development role, and, and what we were doing on the job front was great. The teachers are working super hard. They need to get the support that they deserve. And I applaud some members of this school board for taking those actions, and some of the rest of you either need to step up or step down.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else here tonight like to speak? All right. How many people do we have online tonight? Fifty-nine. For any of those 59 that are online tonight like to speak, if you chance, speak and public comment with the two boards here tonight, both the board of supervisors and the school board. Would anyone like to speak that's online tonight? Anyone like to speak that's online?
Yes.
All right, yes ma'am. Would you station now? Put a record, please.
Yes, this, certainly. This is Tina Withers, and I am currently an employee of Northumberland County Public Schools. I would like to clarify a couple of things this evening. When Shan, Ms. O'Beir and I discovered the incident with the IRS, which we did not find out ourselves until March, we immediately contacted the IRS to get more information about what was going on. And so I don't want anyone to think that either of us that are currently working very hard in that finance department to think that we were aware of this situation before March. When we called the IRS, we got some information. After we got the information, we looked at some of the paperwork that was involved, and then we let Dr. Leslie know. And that's when the information was put on board docs for the April meeting. So a, all of this financial concern happened before we were even employees there. So I just want to make that clear, that it was the previous employees and finance director, Ms. Booth, when all of these discrepancies seemed to happen. Also, I want to make note, because it's not been done before, that the finance secretaries at the school have been very helpful and that they always are on point with their school books. And that's never been said before in the meetings. They, they do a great job at the schools. And just so you know, Dr. Curran, I wasn't planning on going into May as the interim finance director because of your personal attacks during the school board meetings. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak that's online tonight? Anybody else, Rob? Nobody's raised a hand? All right. I will close the public hearing then. Not the public hearing, public comment, I'm sorry. I get it right on his face.
I would like to respond to Ms. Withers. When I made my motion tonight, I said that-
We don't usually respond at public comment.
We can respond to public.
You can respond?
I can.
You're so smart. I want to grow up to be like you today. Go ahead.
What, what did you say? So everybody can hear it? No, repeat it.
Y'all need to respect, y'all need to respect each other.
It'll, it'll go in the paper as you tell.
You need to respect each other.
So I made the comment that the finance, acting finance director is overworked and needs help. I made that very comment tonight. Don't miss it.
Not what you've said in the past. You just made that comment tonight.
I'm not going to respond anyhow.
Let me close the meeting, please. We don't, we don't need these comments.
I know.
It is uncalled for.
It is.
Right. It's not what we're here for. All right. Any other comments here before we move on to the next thing? Board members have any thought? All right. All right, our next item would be the county administrator items. Ms. Tadlock, unless you have something else.
Board close their meeting now.
Yep, they can, they can close or they can stay.
They will not.
Thank you.
At six thirty-five, I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate having you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ten minute, ten minute recess. All back to order. Ms. Tadlock, you have your administrative items?
Yes, sir. First, first item we have is the Virginia Tiered System of Supports Grant, a total of thirty thousand dollars. It's a request from the school division for this grant.
Can you tell us something about this grant or someone here that can give us some information? Dr. Leslie?
Yes, ma'am.
Please give us some information on this grant.
Sure, so this is a grant that we received some time ago, VTSS, which is Virginia Tiered System of Supports. That provides about thirty thousand dollars for us to put things in place to, to support all students. So a system of supports literally means that we have to tier things so that they support our high achievers and our lower achievers. Typically, we use money from a VTSS grant that is given up to us for PBIS, which is a positive behavior intervention system, and we have very strong programs for a positive behavioral intervention system in the, especially in the elementary and middle school and also in the high school. They just are a little less interested sometimes than our younger kiddos.
All right, I see this grant was awarded in July the first two thousand twenty-four. Somebody's been sitting on it a long time.
I can't answer that.
I'm not blaming you. Not blaming you because you just came into the picture.
Yes, sir. What I can tell you is that I believe that it was approved, I don't want to misspeak, in the February meeting or maybe January meeting in the school board, or, Mr. Tadlock, do you recall?
As far as the school division.
Yeah, it was approved by the school division, and I'm not sure. We had tried to get it on the board agenda, I believe, the previous month, and we weren't able to get it on there.
Yeah, and I know that in the documentation, it says that the revenue was received March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five from VDOE.
Okay.
And the EDI deposits included in the documentation as well.
Were there any matching funds to this? Or was this, or was this just a hundred percent grant?
I have to think for a moment. I'm sorry, we have a lot of different grants. I'm, I'm really, I'm pretty sure that this one has only in-kind matching, so insofar as us providing services, but there's not a dollar amount grant, uh, dollar, dollar amount match.
All right. Also looking at a, I guess it's an invoice here or something. I just want to get some clarification and so. School Cafeteria Fund, that was a transfer of money. Two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. That says that was paid March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I guess that was just money being transferred back and forth?
I do not know. I don't have in front of me what you're looking at at the moment. If I'm able to take a look at that, I may be able to make a comment.
Come right on. Come right on up here, look.
I don't have any information on that at all.
All right. You don't have any information on it?
Now, the extended my information on the VTSS is what we have on the front, that we had perceived the allocation that we were asking for, we approved as a special appropriation that had been presented to the school board and needed to be presented here. Anything else included in there? I, I can't make comment on it. I'm not aware of that documentation at the moment. I don't know if it was inadvertently placed in there.
This, it, it may have been inadvertently placed in there. It was together, and it may have just gotten stuck.
Yeah, that's right out of left field for me. I don't, I don't.
Two different, two different.
Two different things, and I'm just wondering why it was in here, you know?
Right, and, and I can't, I don't know.
All right.
But thanks for that.
So it's thirty thousand, and you're going to put that in which, which category?
That would be a special appropriation.
Okay.
And without looking at, I believe that's one, two.
All right.
No, it's not two.
Mr. Chairman, that's part of the EDI, that two-two-two. I think that may have just been included to reflect what part of that EDI was submitted to the, the county.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, on that, if you look at the EDI, the thirty thousand dollars is the first item on that EDI.
All right.
Oh, okay.
That, that may have been just a-
We found that we actually received that grant from the Virginia Department of Education. I guess they just included all of the information on that then.
All right.
I do recall seeing that as the first item when I verified that it was received.
All right, board members have any other questions and comments? If not, what's pleasure to board?
It's a grant loaning.
Yep.
No matching funds required by the county. Motion to approve.
Doc, sec. Got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. All of us against? Doc Leslie, your motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item I have is the fiscal year twenty-six budget for the Northern Echo Regional Jail. The jail board did approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget. It's passed Wednesday. The total operational budget is thirteen million, eight hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred thirty dollars. There is no cost to the localities that are members of that, of the Northern Echo Regional Jail. You do have in your board packet information related to the expenditures and revenues and also the significant points related to that, that budget.
All right, board members have any questions or comments?
When does this have to be approved?
As soon as they can get it because they are ready to do it. Would it need to by June? Not even by May the first.
May.
May the first.
Yeah.
That's why we bring it to you a little bit earlier.
I'll be honest, I haven't had time to look over it.
I haven't either.
Well, I don't want to do something like this and not do it. Well, we're going to need a call meeting then.
We're going to have to be by, you said May the first, right?
Now, June.
May.
May the first.
May the first.
They, they did send out that, I think they could do middle of May. They, they did check. Part of that was the open enrollment aspect of it, and they want to cover the additional cost for the, the health insurance. So they want to try to get that information as soon as possible. All of the boards have to approve that from each of the localities.
So are you saying this could be moved to our agenda in our regular meeting today?
I believe that would give them time. It, it's-
That's okay with me. I want y'all to have a chance to read, go through it.
If we have another called meeting, we can do it at that, that point in time.
All right. All right. We'll move on then, Ms. Tadlock.
All right, the next item is the resolution regarding the local and regional water supply planning application for the fiscal year twenty-five water supply planning grant. This is being run through the Northern Echo Planning District Commission. It's no cost to the localities. We do need to review the water supply plan, and that is done on a regional basis. This, this does need to be approved by the, the board, and they do need this as soon as possible so that they can move forward. They are asking that the resolutions be back to them by May fifteenth.
We got a meeting Monday night. All right, what do y'all want to do?
Who has a meeting Monday night? What'd you say?
Northern Echo Planning District.
Move to approve. Resilience.
We have a planning, all right, motion. I have a motion to approve. Second. Second.
Second.
All right, a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye. 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 All of us against? Tadlock, that motion passes. You have anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
All right, foreclose the meeting. Any board members have any other comments?
We got the school well coming up for discussion. Can you give us that information and like your letter again from DEQ and the reason why that well needs to be replaced and all that stuff and get it back into us?
For the well down to the school?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to review that before it comes back up.
Is it, isn't it two wells?
One or two.
There's one well that it, there's different timing in which they need to be replaced, but we can get the information for you.
Doc Leslie, would you like my comment?
I didn't know if you needed information on the well. Was it our well?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think you just approved the MOU the other night.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's what we're talking about. All those, you have two wells down there now.
Yes, sir.
And they've both been, DEQ has both, has said that both of them have to be replaced.
I think it was the EPA, that said they had to be replaced. As far as I know, and I don't want to disagree with Mr. Tadlock, it was just the one, I've read the letter about the well abandonment on one of them that has to be abandoned by March. Is it two? We have two, but, okay.
So the engineer, the, he brought into the status what's going on there because there are two wells now. There's potential cross contamination, but there's also apparently potential link between them that may, might, may, may make the remediation easier. So it's, it's up for grabs right now. That's why we need the engineering to figure out how bad it is. But the planning commission recommended approval of going over the reading early, the investigation last night.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, ma'am. That's all I got. All right. Nothing else? I entertain a motion. Yeah. What you got, Mr.?
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Tadlock, as you know, a lot of programs are being cut by the federal government. I'd like for you to check in on the grant to help the older people that are sixty-five and older that receive fuel.
On, on what kind of help?
Fuel.
Uh-huh. Fuel assistance.
Fuel assistance.
I don't think, that's, that's not being cut.
Okay, we want to make sure.
Not being cut.
Okay. Because we have quite a few people that depend on that.
The problem with the fuel is they don't get it until January, and it gets cold in December, and it's cold on them old people.
That's right.
See, but they won't let them have it. They give it to them for January, February, and March. People who plant gardens in March, they don't need it in March. But they need it in December when it's cold. And that's the problem. And I talked to the social service lady, and she said that's done by Richmond. Something needs to be said.
Yeah, we need to check and see.
So many people.
Yeah.
Wrapped up in blankets in December.
Yeah, got quite a few people that depend on it.
Yeah, you, you all right, a lot of people, and just like Mr. Fisher said, they don't give out the oil pill. It's too daggone cold. They don't start repairing of equipment that you've already got in the coal well. They need to do it all a little bit sooner, which would help everybody. Because I go to the houses and I can't fix the equipment because they have no oil. Right. Or they have no gas.
And a lot of times, it's at least the second week in January before the band comes to fill the pack.
Yep.
So, yeah, I brought that up. So right now, it's safe, right? Everything.
Oh, it's safe, yeah, it's safe.
Good, want to make sure.
All right, gentlemen. Y'all want to stay open or close?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second it. All right, all of us in favor say aye. 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 Thank y'all for coming. Yeah, happy Easter.